June 6, BCC meeting. Please silence your phones and if you would stand for the pledge and invocation by Reverend Emily Proctor. Thank you, Emily.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we are so grateful that you have gathered us here to seek what is best for our community. We give you thanks for the continued service of our local leaders and for all those here who have come to speak and be part of the governance and decision-making here in our community. We pray that you would give us compassionate hearts, open minds, wisdom, courage, that you would send your peace into any anxious heart and guide our deliberations this day. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe we have a special guest tonight or this afternoon. Alicia Butler, you want to come up from Seaside?
Hi, I'm Alicia Butler with the Seaside School Foundation and we put on the annual Seaside School Half Marathon and 5K Run. And I just wanted to thank you on behalf of the teachers and the staff and the parents and the students. You know, thank you for allowing us to continue this run. It's a, makes a big splash and impact on the programs that we offer at the Seaside Schools. So, you know, without that event, it would, you know, it really would make a, it makes a big difference in the lives of the boys and girls. So with that, I wanted to ask your permission to work with the Walton County Sheriff's Department, the South Walton Fire District and county staff to look at putting on our race for this upcoming 2018 year. And it'll be the first weekend in March, March 2nd through the 4th. So I, you know, ask your permission to proceed with that, the steps to move forward to get that in, in play.
Okay.
Do you need a motion for that or is there direction with oppression?
So, once you get everything in, in order, then you'll come back for, for a motion?
Right, okay.
Thank you. And this, I know this is your really big fundraiser, so I'm amazed at how much y'all do raise for the kids. So, great, thank you.
Thank you. And I brought like some little mementos from last year's race as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. We officially call this meeting to order now. If you would refrain from any conversations with your neighbors. We don't have a big crowd tonight, so we don't have to be quite as strict. But when we're full, it's, it's like we don't need to have any additional conversations. Let's consider additions and deletions now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, under add men, we have a request from Tina Barker with the Walton County Sheriff's Office. And the request is to approve to reduce the $55 animal adoption fee to $25 for the No Kill Nation for Just One Day Event, which they intend to hold on June 10th, 2017. The second request is from Kevin Boyle, is a request from Seaside Arts Entertainment Court to hold their annual 4th of July parade and close two lanes of County Road 38 from Seagrove Plaza to Quincy Circle in Seaside on the, on the 4th of July. And then under OMB is a request to approve the Walton County Sheriff's Office sublease of SunTrust Master Lease Number 04613 for fire rescue vehicles under the, under lease with SunTrust Bank. And we'll give you some more details on that when we get to it.
And Madam Chair, I also, I would like to delete items number 21 and 22 under my name. These are the retainer agreements with Theriak in Spain. There's just one minor issue that I need to look into, so I can have it back on the next agenda.
Okay. And then under my name, we got word that West Florida Regional Planning Council would like to help us with a grant for Highway 331, and it's called the Highway 331 Development Technical Assistance Project. And I'll talk more about that under my name tonight. So, do we have a motion approved? Motion and a second?
Second.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Now's the time for public comments, and this is the time for anything on the agenda. If you have to leave early and you can't stay, when we go through the agenda, we'll, we'll give a time for public comments for each item. But if you can't stay for that item, you may come up now and speak about anything on the agenda. Anybody would like to speak? And state your first name, last name, spell your last name, and tell me what number you want to speak to on the agenda. If it's a lot of, if it's a lot of agended items, you need to wait till the very end, end of the meeting.
I'm Koi Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N, and I would like to speak to Agenda Item Number 33 from March 14th. A request to approve a resolution opposing House Bill 17 and Senate Bill 1158.
Is this from a previous agenda?
Preemption of local government authority.
Koi, is this from the previous agenda? Then you'll need to wait till the very end.
I don't, I don't have time. I'm sick, so I'm just going to take this time.
No ma'am, you're not. You can come at the, you can speak at the end. We're very short agenda tonight, but that's our rules. You can speak to anything on the agenda now. And if it's not on the agenda, if it's not on this agenda, you have to wait till the end. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Moving on. Approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Mr. Chapman.
I want to announce my conflict of interest on, with Waste Management. I filed a proper form with the court and will abstain from the vote.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the EALs?
So moved.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Mr. Jones. And we're so glad to have Mr. Jones back, and we're not going to let him go off anymore hardly. Yes.
Just let me say thank you to each of you for your support over the last few weeks. Been a very interesting time, but with the good gracious of the God we serve, he's been very good and allowed us to move through that process in a very seamless manner. We're proud to be here, so thank you for your support and all that you've offered over the last few weeks. To our staff for stepping up. It's no doubt that everybody knew what to do and got it done, so we appreciate that. And to the many of you that we've heard from and your good thoughts and prayers and wishes, it means more than you know. So it's good to be back. We're going to continue to fight the fight and looking for a victory in the end, so we appreciate all of you very much. First item is one that we added on is from the Sheriff's Office, a request to approve to reduce the $55 animal adoption fee to $25 for the No Kill Nation for Just One Day, which is an event they intend to hold on June 10th. And it's simply an effort to reduce the cost of adoption to increase the number of adoptions for that day. So we would certainly recommend your approval.
Motion second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience on the No Kill Day? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Next item is a request from Kevin Boyle. And this is a request from Seaside Arts Entertainment to hold their annual 4th of July parade and close the two lanes of County Road 38 from Seagrove Plaza to Quincy Circle in Seaside. They have met with the Sheriff's Office and Public Works and have all the approvals they need. It was just an oversight on all of our part to get it on the agenda prior to publishing it, so that's why we added it on. But we would certainly recommend your approval.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience on the Seaside Parade? All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you. The next item is a request to approve scope of services and advertise for RFQ for broadband feasibility study. On March 28th of this year, the board gave direction to staff to draft a scope of services for a broadband feasibility study. This is the scope that staff has presented to you for your approval. Upon your approval, we will put it on the street and ask for responses to that request for qualifications. We believe this is an ongoing effort to improve the broadband service throughout the county, and this would be the next step in that process.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other comments on broadband? Any comments from the audience on broadband? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Do we want to move back to number three, add-on on the Sheriff's?
I've got it later.
Okay, alright.
It'll be under, it'll be, thank you though. Next item is a request regarding direction on a policy known as Dig Once and discussing including specific language in the Land Development Code and Comp Plan. The Dig Once, Dig Once policy basically puts into our code a policy that says when appropriate infrastructure is being placed in, we want to make sure that we provide means and methods for broadband, internet service and those things. This be conduit under roadways. If you're familiar with dry line sewers, when some folks put in developments, they'll put in a dry line sewer and event sewers available, they don't have to go tear up the development again. Well, this is a very similar process that will accommodate high-speed internet, fiber optics, those type of things, simply putting in the infrastructure at the time of construction. So if it's something the board would like to move forward with, we can go two or three ways with it. We could, staff can provide some language to you that would amend the Land Development Code to include such language in the code. We could work with the Matrix Group and their rewrite of things to be sure it's placed in the appropriate places in the code or the plan, which may be the most desirable way since they're digging through those things anyway. So if, if, you know, whatever direction the board would like to go, we'll be glad to move it forward, if in any direction at all.
Well, my comment would be is we put the backbone in basically, along 331 and several other roads throughout the county. I've had some requests from some of the folks in my district that won't have that connectability to that backbone, but right now it's obviously not there. So I would think this would be a good thing to do at the time they're out there tearing up dirt and digging ditches, to go ahead and drop an extra set of piping in there so that can be done at a later day if we can get it done. So I'm, I think we ought to move forward with that, come up with a little concern in it.
This is so important. This is so important to make our county special. One thing I do want to suggest is that the, I would like to suggest that we use Matrix at this time for the Land Development Code. And it's, it's for developers, it's for any time that ditch which comes out of their barn, a pipe goes in and we connect, all of it will connect together, so.
Yes ma'am. Rick Wilson, for the record, thank you, W-I-L-S-O-N, and the Commissioner is exactly correct. You know, for about 1% of the added costs, these developers can put this infrastructure in developments. Anytime we dig up a road, do any sort of ditch work or trench work to put this conduit along our roads as well. So that'll entice these providers to move in. And what studies have shown is that failures to implement something like Dig Once means more construction, more disruption, less uniformity with, with right-of-way and public right-of-way. And it also, if we don't do something like this, it may make the providers less willing to come in here because of return on investment. So this is something that will really help our citizens in our county. And I was talking to Commissioner Chapman about Walton Bridge Road. If we had gotten ahead of this last year, which, you know, we're, we're one of the most progressive counties in the Southeast United States, definitely in Florida, I can promise you that with broadband. But Walton Bridge, McKinnon Bridge are great examples. If we were to have this in there, we'd have fiber running down there right now and, and possibly hooking into these residential homes, so.
But isn't that certain that we change the code for whenever we do a road or bridge, we can be part of the spec, wouldn't it?
We, yes sir. I mean, from a public works standpoint, those things we do, it's pretty simple. But where you want implement, implemented by the code is when a development comes forward. But now, that's part of the code they have to meet in order to get their approval.
I understand that, but I just want to make sure that as we move forward with any of these road projects, that we make that part of the bid package and understand.
And Public Works has been very receptive to this. They're, they're on board with it. But it's very important for moving our, our county forward with economic development, education, health, you know, telemedicine, telehealth, it's all very important, we feel. But if you have any further questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Well, I guess my question is, do we need two separate motions or two separate? Yes, we want developers to put it in. And I understand working with Matrix, I don't know how long they're going to take to get this turned over. I wish it was done yesterday. That's how anxious I am about this and, and for us, and Melanie's right, to get this done as soon as possible. But do we have to do something separate to instruct our Public Works Department that every time they dig from now on, they put the pipe in? So how do we go about?
I think, I think we have that clear direction, but certainly a motion and a second, a vote of the board for that to be part of staff policy would not hurt.
Okay, so you want to take this motion first and then somebody make another motion?
Sure.
Are you making this motion?
Make a motion that we move forward with the Matrix and Land Development Code and implement the Dig Once into the Land Development Code.
Okay.
You did the second?
Second.
Have a motion second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Yes, sir, come on up.
For the record, my name is Bob Hudson. I just wonder if anybody has explored the cost of putting that pipe per foot?
I can't tell you, but I can tell you the cost it's going to be if we don't do it.
Well.
It's about 1% of the additional cost.
It's about $4 a foot.
And what would it be if we do it afterwards? Because we know we need connectivity, we know we need broadband, we know we need economic development. So what would it cost when we go back?
Well, 80% of the cost of running fiber is the mobilization, the digging of ditches and put the, the actual conduit in the ground. So if we do that, we're going to reduce the cost greatly to providers or us, whoever wants to run the fiber. As far as the exact dollar amount, we'll have to do a little bit more research on that. But the savings are there. Presidential, last president put this into his policy. I believe this president is pushing infrastructure and these types of things as well.
My question dealt specifically because as I heard the motion, it was anytime we dug, we put pipe in for not only broadband, but for telephone, cable vision, everything under the sun. And, and once you do that, you have added tremendously to the cost of development, the cost of building roads and things of that nature. I understand the cost savings that could be there. I just want to make sure we understand the cost upfront that we're paying because we don't dig ditches for telephone company. We don't dig ditches. That's their cost, not our.
Rick, if I may ask, if we put it in there and Century Link or Cable Vision, whoever wants to go down that road, they're going to purchase it from us.
They're going to lease it, yes sir. The average cost is $5 per foot.
And so we would recoup some from there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
I would like to make a follow-up motion that from this day forward, that whenever Public Works is, is digging up a road, redoing a road, redoing lines, whatever, you know, Rick knows how to phrase it, that we go ahead and dig once.
And Commissioner.
And put in the infrastructure.
And I would recommend that we create a scoring matrix on it to say, okay, if we're doing X amount of work, this is where we put this in. If we're just going and, and let's just say patching a hole, we're not digging and disrupting the ground, then obviously we wouldn't. But we can spell it out clearly and provide it to you.
Have a motion.
That's my motion.
Let's second.
Should, wait, wait just a second. Should we wait a second for discussion?
I can bring it back to you by next meeting, Commissioner.
Should we wait until you have a policy?
We'll bring it back to you by next meeting if you'd like.
It's not that I'm against this. But I want us to have a policy before we approve something without.
We can bring back a scoring matrix and, and all the language that goes with it for your approval at the next meeting if you like.
I would appreciate that, thank you. I would draw my motion at this time.
Do we want to consider?
I'll draw the second.
Just our Public Works or developers from this day forward or just Public Works right now? Is that all we physically can, because how, the Matrix Group, the Land Development Code is going to take some time. So is that all we want to look at is our Public Works or?
So I assume we're just going to give direction to go and bring forth a policy?
We can work on that.
That's not to say that we couldn't do this earlier than Matrix. If we see that Matrix is going to be way out there, then we absolutely could bring it back at an earlier date.
Yeah, I mean, how long will we, Jenny, how long do we expect Matrix to, you know?
That might be a, a question for Mac, I'm not sure.
At least a couple of years or a year.
Maybe next year.
Yeah, that's, the whole Matrix concept is going to be months to a year before.
And think of the developments, it's out there now.
You would need to get ahead of it.
If you guys would like to go forward with the change to the Land Development Code, if you'd like to, I guess, rescind your previous vote and instruct staff to bring forward the changes, we can accomplish that faster.
That would be nice, yeah. Because if we've got to wait on Matrix for another year, so think of the developments that are being developed right now.
Withdraw my motion.
I think it, I think you would need a motion to reconsider your previous action and then to rescind the previous action and then give staff direction to bring back the policy regarding our Public Works folks and Land Development Code and Comp Plan. And maybe give us two meetings to get that done because of, yeah. So the first meeting in July?
Uh, we can have.
We can have a rest.
Yes.
So what he said now?
I make that motion.
Get what he said. I will second, second that motion, okay?
Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Yes ma'am, I see, or yes sir. Mr. Brook.
Bob Brook, B-R-O-O-K-E. I just have a question. I'm not, it's not clear to me exactly what the Dig Once policy is. Is the board clear on what that policy is specifically? Is there a written statement of what it is? I, I just don't understand exactly what it is that you're enacting, and I appreciate the opportunity to, to have that understanding.
Based, based on the last action, they're not going to take any action to enact anything today. However, staff will bring back a clear policy of what Dig Once means in a broad sense of making sure that there's provisions to have appropriate infrastructure for high-speed internet and those type of things as we move forward in the future.
Great, thank you, thank you.
And they're incorporated in infrastructure projects.
And, and real quick, Mr. Jones, you know, what are the reasons that we face this issue? Is when the economy took a downturn in '08, '07, '06, subdivisions were, were not built anymore. They didn't run telecom wires, they didn't run cable, internet. So we have residents in inlet beach areas and other areas in the south end of the county and the north end of the county that call us and say, I've got this nice house in this nice subdivision down here in South Walton, and I have no internet, I have no phone service, I barely have a Verizon signal. We want to work from home, you know, they want to add to our economy and they can't. So this is what helps prevent anytime a new development is built, they run a bank of conduit for telecom to run in there, which is greatly going to reduce their cost and their return on investment, which is what they base their construction practices on.
We talk about economic development. We are losing people every, I mean, literally every week that want to live in Walton County. They want to live in the south end of this county and although there's some that, that live in the north end. And they can't live here because their livelihood is, is connected to this little thing right here. And when they can't, then they move somewhere where they can get it. So I mean, it's, you talk about economic development, that's one good reason.
Any other comments from the audience? Seeing, yes ma'am, are you coming up?
Koi Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N. On this topic, the reason they can't live here is because there can't be any more development. It's a federal law that a majority of this island remain undeveloped.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Yes, on the, in the back, back there.
Hi, I went to a meeting recently, actually.
If you would, state your name, please.
Shannon, Shannon Humphrey. Humphrey. H-U-N-P-H-R-U-Y.
Thank you.
I recently went to a meeting because we did move here February 27th. Prior to moving here, I contacted the internet provider on three occasions to make sure that we would have it when we got here, because all of our income is online from home. After we got here, there wasn't an opportunity to get it. We were told, too bad, oh well, we don't care, you're not going to get it. And three months later, I was facing a situation where I was either going to have to go get a different job, retrain in a different job, or move. We kept waiting and being told that it was going to be there in a couple of weeks. To boot, I think a bigger issue that maybe we're forgetting about is the kids. Because my son came up here with a 4.0 across the board. He's always been 4.0, he's going into 10th grade. And he wasn't able to hold that 4.0 coming in, because the teachers have an expectation that the kids can go online and learn. My daughter had to take two different courses online, because it wasn't even offered in Walton County at all, because they were advanced courses for high school and she's only in 8th grade. And she finished out with a D, because she couldn't even have the access to get online. They're now going back and they're reopening that for her. But I mean, this caused, moving from an area that had that in South Florida to here has caused us to think twice about, maybe this wasn't the best move for us, even though we tried to do our due diligence and check into it ahead of time.
Thank you, thank you for those comments. Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, like sign.
Okay, we will have at the first meeting in July, policies on those things that we do and those things that we would see making amendments to the Land Development Code.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
All right, next item is a request to approve to advertise an invitation to bid for the Big Red Fish Lake Bridge Project. This project is ready to go out to bid. We would anticipate a start date of post-Labor Day of this year, so we stay out of the busy season. But this will be one more of our Coastal Dune Lakes bridges that we get in tip-top shape. So we would recommend your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is a request to approve Public Works Task Order Number 17-05 for Old Landfill Road PDNE with Atkins Engineering in the amount of $178,207.64. This is an existing unpaid roadway in the county that would put us in the process of moving this forward into a paid roadway and take it out of our unpaid roadway inventory. Commissioner Nipper has a conflict issue.
Yes, sir, I have a conflict of interest. I filed the proper paperwork and I'm going to abstain from the vote.
And that was $198,000, wasn't it?
$198,207.64, yes ma'am.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, 4-2, 4-2-0.
All right. Next item is a request to approve to submit the US 331 Utility Upgrade Project for consideration for Restore POT3 Funds. There's no doubt that this board has, on numerous occasions, identified the utility project on 331 Water and Sewer as the top priority of the board in pretty much everything we've done. Commissioner Commander will be attending a consortium meeting later this month. This is simply to reaffirm and confirm that as she goes to that meeting, she can stand on board approval, that this is the top priority, even seeking POT3 funds, which the consortium would work with. So this is simply reaffirming to her as she goes there that she has this board's support in presenting that project to them for that POT3 funding.
So moved, second.
Motion second. Any other comments? Thank you for doing this. We really need to move this along. Any other comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Thank you. It's me a leg to stand on.
Next item is a request to surplus fire rescue capital assets removed from the county's fixed asset register. This is a, a move between the, when we put fire rescue in the Sheriff's Office, this is simply transferring the assets, so primarily for insurance purposes. Their carrier has certain requirements for them to cover it. Ours have certain ones, and the situation we're in now don't allow either one of them to cover those. Ours have certain ones and the situation we're in now don't allow either one of them to cover those. So this will put it in a position that the sheriff's office insurance will cover those assets.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And a similar request, and this was the third add-on, is to approve the sheriff's office sublease of SunTrust Master Lease Number 04613 for fire rescue vehicles under lease with SunTrust paint. The county had leased some of these vehicles from SunTrust. Now that they're under the operation of the sheriff, we need this sublease agreement so that the sheriff's office insurance carrier will cover them very similar to the other assets we just moved. So this is primarily to make sure that the appropriate insurance can be applied to this equipment.
So moved.
Have a motion. Motion second. Any other comments? Comments, questions from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Madam Chairman, I do have one question while we're on this topic. Whenever the sheriff that day that he, you know, he said he would take over fire and rescue the next morning, he said he was, they were ready, not he, I don't mean you, the sheriff's department was ready. I believe we're still doing their payroll and their HR. Do we have any idea whenever they're going to take over that?
I think Melissa would probably be the best person to answer those questions and she's not here tonight. But it's my understanding that I think that they'll be taking it over in the new fiscal year. Is that what it seems?
So our department will continue to do that?
Until October.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Did we vote on that? Okay, all right. Jake, Mr. Tusa.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Light agenda tonight, we just have one item and a couple of updates. Our first item, request to award ITB 017-018 to the low bidder Harper Landscaping for approval and authorization by the chairwoman to sign contract number 017-018. This contract is for maintaining the median and adjacent right-of-ways for portions of Highway 98. So if you might recall, last December, the board approved for a joint effort between the TDC and the county for right-of-way and median maintenance. So the TDC will be maintaining the, paying for maintenance of the gateways and then the county will do the other remaining portions. One area that was not included in this, and it's quite a big chunk, so I just wanted to refer you to this little sheet I gave you earlier, is a section over between Highway 395 and Water Sand Origin. So that is not included in this. Florida DOT will still maintain that area. The price, the TDC for 15 months, the price is $37,245 and the county for 15 months is $136,500.
Is DOT putting any money into this?
They are not. Actually, they'll be rebating some money back to us. They'll be doing that on a quarterly basis. What they do is whatever they, the cost, where they assess with the costs is where they normally cut, they'll be rebating that back to us.
Well, when you say "we," they're going to rebate or they're going to "we" to the TDC or "we" to the board? Then we putting the most money in.
Well, I mean, it probably should be proportional since we're splitting it.
Man, you're smooth.
So anyway, is there any questions? Are any questions?
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion second?
Second.
Have a motion second. Any other questions now? Any questions from the audience? Comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
And just a couple of quick updates. Wanted to just let the board know the Grayton parking lot is open. It's been open for almost two weeks now and we're having some great success with cars parking there. I went out there personally on Thursday and counted the cars at about 1:00 or 2:00 in the afternoon. We had 154 cars on the lot. And the week before that, when it opened on that Friday before Memorial Day weekend, we had 113 cars. So obviously, it's being utilized, which is great. You know, we spent seven and a half million dollars on that property last fall and it's great that we're using it this summer, so.
Well, I can testify to that because my office is right there and people aren't parking in my parking lot.
It actually, it is a little bit better. I went to Shanticleer for lunch a couple of days ago and it was a little bit better on the street, not quite as congested, so obviously people are parking in a lot.
I think a lot of all the employees in there are parking there. It frees up a lot of space for them.
Absolutely. Then I wanted to give you an update on the TDT collections for April. We had some good growth, 21.89% up from year-over-year, from last April. This year, our April numbers are $1,958,470.06. So that's pretty good numbers, up almost 22%. So year-over-year, we are up 12.56% for a total of $7,405,446.15.
Wow.
Yeah, so.
Jay, you've just given us such good news, I hate to bring up a sore subject. But I don't, I'm sure the rest of the commissioners have been getting the emails I have been getting about photographers waiting out into the dunes to take people's pictures. Some of the vendors are putting their chairs in our dunes. How can we expect our tourists to come and stay off the dunes if we can't keep our people off the dunes? So, and I know we hired more code enforcement officers, but I think we have a real problem out there. We need to get on top of this. I mean, somehow the tents, apparently they're still using big tents.
Well...
You know, I mean, I'm just saying, do we need, what do we need to fix the problem?
Well, I think we need to still let our new code enforcement officers work. I mean, it's a work in progress. So I think we've made some good progress just in the past couple of weeks that the season truly stepped up. So in regards to the tents, I think that's just going to take a little bit of time to get some education out there on tents and then our guys, code enforcement, what they're working through, you know, what's the reasonable amount of time? If you go out and you give somebody a warning, because you have to do the warning before you can issue a citation, well, how long is that? So we determined that, we came up with one to two hours. So after one to two hours, our guys can go back and then they're going to issue a citation. Now, here's the bottom line, though, is somebody can take the citation and they don't have to remove their tent. I mean, if they want to get citations all day long, then they can do that. So, you know, that's a little bit of a challenge for us of, you know, how we enforce that. Now, most people don't want to rack up $100 tickets. So, you know, if you tell them, "Look, this is the ordinance, you need to move, you need to remove your tent," then they're good with that. So we haven't had too many situations. People are, when we're talking to them, are responding. So it's just, I think, a little bit of an education that's going to have to take place. We are working on signage for our beach accesses. We're going to be doing some advertising, doing some, perhaps like on social media. So we're going to be getting the word out for that. So bear with us for, you know, another week or two and we'll see how things go. But our guys, like I said, are working through it and I think they're making some progress.
Well, what, are there any tools that our code guys need in their toolbox that they don't have now that we can help, you know, and that goes actually for both code enforcement. I mean, I'm getting, you know, a lot of concern about, well, it has to be reported by my neighbor, you know. But anyway, that's a whole nother.
Yeah.
But if there's something that we can do...
Right.
Make this work better and put another tool in their toolbox.
Yeah.
We need to do it. I mean, that's the most precious thing we have right now and...
You know, as of right now, I would say no. One thing that we are looking at is looking at maybe some type of a radio system that's connected to the sheriff's office. So we are in touch with the sheriff's office, had conversations with them. And so as we move through that and we determine that's a good fit, then obviously we'll come back before the board and ask for that. But we haven't made a determination just yet. We are having conversations with them on that.
Thank you.
And on the vendor, the vendor issue, have you talked to the organization that's supposed to be self-policing themselves?
I haven't talked to them in some time, so I think that's something...
You might want to mention that we're having a problem with. I know I got one email about the chairs and umbrellas in the dunes. So if you could mention it to them, they will help self-police themselves too.
Actually, Brian and I were talking earlier, actually late last week, about kind of us doing an audit of the beaches where, because, you know, we're trying to be a little more complaint-driven, where somebody goes and goes to the website, puts a complaint in. But I think it'd probably be beneficial if we do some type of an audit and see where there are some deficiencies there and things we can address firsthand. So that's something we're working on as well.
I just think that takes too long. By the time you get, say, another tourist trying to find the website, to fill in the form, to get to y'all, I mean, come on. You know, if a code enforcement officer is walking down the beach and he sees a violation...
They definitely, they definitely do that. I mean, but it's complaint-driven, but I mean, as they're driving up and down the beach, I mean, they're looking for those things and as they encounter them, they do address them. So, yeah, let me be clear on that.
Okay. And Commissioner, I'm sure you got the same email I did about we're starting to do massages on our beach?
We are not doing massages on the beach.
Some guy wants to.
Some guy wants to and that's probably something that we need to address as to what we are going to allow on our beaches. And Commissioner Nipper and I have had a conversation about this. It's something that she talked about as we were addressing these ordinances last year, so.
She turned red.
So it's, we, Brian and I need to talk about that and we'll probably be back before you in short order. But we'll probably need to address as far as what we want to allow, what we don't want to allow on the beaches.
We're supposed to be a family-friendly beach here, people.
So yes, if you will sooner than later bring that back to us.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Sooner than later.
And one last thing, just wanted to introduce our new Director of Sales, Dawn Trumper. Dawn, do you want to stand up?
Hey, welcome aboard.
Dawn has hit the ground running. She has been meeting with our bed tax collectors the past week or so that she's joined us and really getting to know the Director of Sales at our different properties. So just want to tell her, great job. And I know I've already gotten some feedback from bed tax collectors and they're just really appreciative of her reaching out to them and seeing what we can do to help them.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the job you're doing.
Jay, I would also like to thank the clerk's office staff that polices the bed tax. If y'all haven't seen that presentation, I suggest that you have them up to your office to see. It's way more thorough than the FBI does.
Well, and we, at the TDC meeting earlier this morning, we, the clerk's office came and presented, did a presentation. And we had some, a few council members who were concerned about the job they were doing and they wanted to maybe go with DOR, Floor Department, you know, Revenue. And so after the clerk did their presentation, everybody was like, "No, we need to stay with what we have, it's great." So the clerk does a good job for us and so we're really pleased with what they're doing.
Thank you. Next is a public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. We will be talking about money. Yes.
Madam Chair, it's a request to approve a resolution to bring forward $820,000 in the debt service fund for the purchase of the property north of the bay located on Bay Grove Road in the parcel number there. It's the parcel just north of the bay on the west side. I'm sorry?
The Sandy Beach.
Yes, sir. It's the two plus acres that you'd approved us to move forward with and this is simply moving the funding to an available source where we can make the purchase.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion second. You, when it's money, you spend it in the public meeting. When it's not money, you take it, you close the meeting and then spend it.
Second.
Or you don't spend it, but you just decide.
Really?
Yeah. How many times are you cheering?
I don't know.
Okay.
It's been too long, the past year.
Any public comments on this, on spending the money? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Was there a comment?
I just wanted to know what they're buying it for.
Come on up if you want to have a question, please. That's a good question because we'll be glad to answer that.
Koi Bowman, what are you buying it for?
We're buying it for recreation. On the north end, we have very little places for people to park and swim and boat and have their families. And we even have families that I think they spend the night there on that parcel. So it's a great parcel for the recreation of our families.
Okay, I see. It's one of these repetitively quick claim properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Motion to close public hearings.
Second.
Motion second to close public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioners, the only item I have is number 20. This is a request to approve and authorize the chairwoman to sign a settlement agreement in Kia Alford versus Walton County Circuit Court Case Number 2016 CA 357. This is a settlement agreement, it's $13,000. It'll be paid by our insurer. We will have a $10,000 deductible though in this case. This was as a result of an automobile accident where the county was at fault.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
And that's all I have with the deletions we have.
Commissioner Tony Anderson?
I have nothing to discuss.
Commissioner Sarah Commander?
Not a thing.
Commissioner Melanie Nipper?
Nothing.
Happy birthday. Her birthday, her birthday was Saturday and she, we won't make her tell us how old she is, how young she is, how young she is. Now, you don't ever ask a woman her age or her weight. Yes.
Why didn't somebody tell me that when I was married?
So happy birthday.
Thanks.
Vice Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Bill Chapman.
I have nothing.
And under my name, I have a technical. We got word that the West Water Regional Planning Council wanted to help us with, I believe we've put something on the screen too, it's a little, little. But it's a $40,000 grant. As we are widening 331, we're getting a lot of interest on people that want to put businesses there. So we want to do a economic, with the Department, Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, a technical assistance program to conduct a study along the 331 corridor in order to accommodate the anticipated growth along the corridor. The county is seeking financial assistance in the form of a grant to study, to ensure the county correctly plans for growth, infrastructure requirements, and implement smart, sustainable growth along the expansion of 331. So that is what we are applying for.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I did realize I had something that I did, I wanted to bring up because I spoke to Bob Brooks during our break and he had a very good idea. We have, is Melinda still here? We have about $200,000 in our pot 1 money that the project went away or whatever and we didn't spend. Even if we had to put some of our money with it, it might be a good idea. And let's think about it, maybe bring it up at the next meeting for both, for us to take that $200,000 and maybe put some money with it if we have to and hire someone like the Haas Center to come and do a visioning of what our future needs are, what we all are looking for. And I've just done visioning, but this would be a more comprehensive. We've got all this money coming in. We have to have a plan, an overall plan of how we're going to use it. And I thought it was a very good suggestion. Bob, do you think, do you want to comment on that? Did I say it right?
You did, thank you.
Okay. It might be, let's get some experts in here because this is a lot of money coming in and, I mean, the future will look back at us to see if we spend it right. To me, that's a very small amount of money to have a vision and a plan for how we're going forward. So I'd like for us to think about that and maybe discuss it at the next meeting. forward. So I'd like for us to think about that and maybe discuss it at the next meeting.
Okay, and direct, Melinda and Bill have some dialogue with it, too.
Yes, Melinda and Bill, yeah.
Okay, great.
There is Bill. Yeah, there she is, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got your direction?
Yeah.
Thank you. And Melinda's great. I was so impressed. And you know, we're getting accolades from, I was in a meeting the other day, and a lady from Oakley County was saying, you know, how we have such great leadership. I think, Melanie, you were there, too, about how Walton County has such great leadership, and we're going forward, and they're watching us to see how we're moving forward. So that was really a great compliment. We don't, we don't sell ourselves well enough sometimes. All right, citizen request, Anthony Wolfe. We'll start with you. Is Mr. Wolfe here?
Yes.
Okay, he's not. Other public comments? Ms. Bowman, would you like to come up? Now, thank you for your patience, and I'm sorry you're sick.
Koi Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N, speaking to item number 33 from March 14th, request to approve a resolution opposing House Bill 17 and Senate Bill 1158, preemption of local government authority. You all passed this, which means you agreed to disagree with the House and the Senate of Florida. So of course, I had to go look up what those things were, and what they were was the state of Florida requesting that the federal government step in in county politics, you guys. That's because the state of Florida realized they were fighting on the wrong side, and that they've done a horrible thing for the liberty of the United States. By the way, I also looked it up, and this is in the Constitution, whether you said you don't want it to happen or not, even if the entire state of Florida voted against it, the federal government has the right to intercede in small county politics. That's because the founders of our Constitution were really, really smart, and they knew that something like this would happen. After a couple of hundred years, somebody would try to take over America, because you see in 1976, when they declared their independence, Europe looked at America like, you've got to be kidding me, America belongs to Europe because we took it. So it took 35 years until 1812 for America to actually win its independence from Europe. But like I said, the founders of our Constitution were really, really smart. They knew that eventually the rest of the world would look at the United States and say, who are you to say that that land is yours when you took it from the indigenous people that were living there? So what the founders of our Constitution did in 1814 was they made a treaty called the Treaty of Dancing Rabbit with the local indigenous people right here on this island. And when the Native Americans said, yes, United States will share this land with you, the United States of America, but you have to protect us from the destruction of foreign invasion and tyranny, that's what's going on now, is that there's a machine very close to here that's producing extremely dangerous low-frequency sound waves. You remember this map I showed you that said you're not supposed to build right here? That has to do with this Resolution 2016-06. There's a map on the back of this that says all of this land is Indian living and hunting ground, including that giant De La Stavis Trust parcel, which has been relabeled from conservation to conservation exempt, and has been totally stripped clean of all green nutrients, animals, and trees, highly illegal. The reason that they wanted the specially-appointed Board of County Commissioners to protect this land was actually to protect the United States' right to be here, because if there are no more Native Americans living in ancestral ways, the United States does not have the right to be here anymore. And we're under attack right now from China and Spain. So what do you think about that?
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Thank you for coming. Yes, next, next person that needs, yes.
Oh, can I tell you one more thing?
Well, really quick, because your time's up. Really quick.
Well, there's really nothing more important than the fact that you're endangering my life with microwave fracking in the forest. And you can call it whatever you want, whether you've built a Tesla coil, or whether you're micro-fracking natural gas out of the ground, or you've sublet my neighborhood's underground to an alien that's eating the quartz crystal sand. There's something horrible going on, and right now, we're all being exposed to low-frequency sound waves. I can feel them, okay?
Thank you very much. Mr. Hudson, I believe your hand's up next.
There's something else really, really important.
No, you'll have to, you'll have to come back the next, next time we have a meeting.
No, no, you can't. You see all of this?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. Your time's up.
All of this? These are, these are all illegal land deeds.
Yes.
All of this land was developed illegally. Oh, that's, that's why you don't want the federal government coming.
Ms. Bowman, I would be, I'll talk to you after the meeting if you're still here. You can have my time after the meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hudson.
For the record, my name is Bob Hudson, and I have two things that I want to talk about. One of the things that Commissioner Commander was talking about was code enforcement on the beach, code enforcement in general. We, the Taxpayers Association, made a request of the county to allow two of our board members to do a ride-along program to try and help us determine what all the, if you think you're getting emails, we're getting them, too. Pictures of tents, pictures of chairs, everything under the sun. And I understand, your county attorney stated that your current policy did not allow for a ride-along program due to liability. We then countered and said, okay, if we were to provide you with hold-harmless agreements, and Ms. Knowles feels that that's not going to satisfy. So if we buy policy covering our people while they're riding, it would be my hope that you would acquiesce and allow us to do that. I'm going to leave that
Okay.
with Ms. Knowles at this point in time.
I can research that.
Second thing, I believe, and most of you know me, I'm pretty outspoken at times, and one of the times you need to be outspoken is when you're wrong. So at this point in time, I'm here to tell you that I was wrong in an ad that we ran in the Dufneak Herald stating some $40 million worth of funding that you had borrowed for an accelerated program. When I looked through the minutes, there was $40 million initially talked about. I didn't look two meetings later and find out it was finally reduced to $14 million. For that, I apologize to you, and within our next ad, we will make that public, because we try and be an organization that stands and prevents factual data. I do apologize for that error on my part, and do the best I can to not make an error like that again. Thank you.
Mr. Hudson, when you, when you get those emails, do you forward those on to TDC? The tents and the, all those, so we can have a record of how many violations we're having, and is it too much trouble?
I need to go back to Commissioner Jones and see what I did with them.
Okay. Well, I don't mean, you don't have to go back, but from, in the future, if you, if you, you know, when you go.
Oh, absolutely. I'll be more than happy to do that, but if you go to Salwal, if you go to the visioning page, you're going to get plenty of
Right.
people's viewpoints as it revolves around whether we're, fill a form out, and two hours, or three hours, or three days later, or whatever it happens to be. But yes, I will be, and if I did retain those, I will make sure.
Right.
Who, who you want me to send them to?
I usually send mine to Brian, Brian Killenberg.
Brian Killenberg.
So, but anyone in TDC could, Jeff McVeigh, Brian, Jay, Mr. Tousa, any of them would be more than happy to respond to them. Any other public comments?
Koi Bowman, item number, item number 19 that we just spoke about.
Yes, I will talk to you individually after the meeting, but we only are allowed to come up one time.
What if I comment on a different issue? I can't spend, I can't just have 30 minutes.
Go ahead and speak on a different issue.
Yes, this is item number 19 about, about the beach we just talked about. Now, I'm all for people having access to the water called a public space. But when I looked this parcel up, what I found was that it's been quit claimed four or five times. And that, that's what all this is about, all of the illegal lands around here, the way that you've converted them into the private citizen's hands is by illegally quit claiming it. Tax evasion is basically what's going on.
Right, right.
And I just want.
Abby, will you raise your hand, Ms. Bowman? If you see this lady, she will take you out in the hall and let you talk to her about those things, and then, and then as soon as I can get through here, I'll come and talk, we'll talk.
I'm actually really worn out, so I don't, you know, I just wanted to let you know that I've sent thousands of them to the IRS.
Right.
Thousands, thousands and thousands of illegally developed land parcels to the Internal Revenue Service.
All right.
So you're all going to go to jail for tax evasion, because each and every single one of you owns a piece of land that's not legal.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. That's enough. Good night. You always have to do that. Okay, planning and development. Come on up.
Can we take like, two minutes?
Yeah, we can take a two minute, a five-minute break. Five minutes in planning and development.
Mr. Carpenter?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you very much. Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department. The first item we have tonight for your consideration is a request to allow staff to advertise an amendment to Chapter 13 of the Land Development Code for both the scenic, both the, both of our primary scenic quarters, to allow for a farmer's market promotional activity in their common area. Presently, these things, tents specifically are prohibited in the U.S. 98 scenic quarter. Farmer's markets are becoming much more popular, both from a healthy food standpoint for the public, and as a promotional activity to drive traffic to retail locations. We've had a number of requests for farmer's markets in areas where the regulations don't actually allow us to permit that. And we have some that have been operating within the scenic quarter rules, but we think it might be an opportunity to expand that opportunity a little bit and provide some more healthy food opportunities within our scenic quarters where these roadside vending kinds of things are typically prohibited. Vivian has done some fairly extensive research on these farmer's markets in other locations and in other jurisdictions, has drafted some language for you to allow us to consider. And if you would authorize it, we would bring this back through the Planning Commission, and then back for two hearings at the Board of County Commissioners before it would become effective.
Questions in the second. Any other comments, questions, comments, questions from the audiences we should do?
Bob Brook, I would just request that, before you actually vote on this, that you at least solicit comments from the Friends of Scenic 30A and from the Scenic Highways Association, just to get their inputs. Thank you.
Will you let them know that it's coming back up? Are these, are these the people you could contact to let them know that we're going to be, it's going to go through the Planning Council, and then you come back here? Ms. Brook?
Yeah, the Scenic Corridor Foundation is already reviewing the draft language, and we will bring it to the Friends of Scenic 30A for them to review at the board meeting next week, I believe, so.
So you're already doing that?
We're doing that. Yes, thank you.
All right, we have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, let's see.
Thank you very much. The next three items are quasi-judicial.
Okay. Anyone who anticipates testifying on any of the quasi-judicial items, if you would, stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you provide to this board will be the truth?
Okay.
Okay. Any Commissioners have any ex parte communications on any of these quasi-judicial items?
Nope.
If so, that's fine. Would any of those conversations or communications, I guess, make it impossible for you to render a fair and impartial decision?
No.
Okay. All right, I think we're ready.
Thank you. The first item on our QJ agenda is the Barker Acres Replat. This is a request to approve by Final Mylar. This is the final step in a development order application to reduce the number of lots in this subdivision from 59 to one for the purpose of building a single-family home. This is one of several antiquated subdivisions in our county that were developed years ago with very small lots that are, that don't comport with our current code. Mr. Barker wanted to build over a number of different lot lines. We have a process where we can build over one common lot line, but not multiple, and this is the remedy that's going to get him where he needs to be.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in the second. Any comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, let's see.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is the Emerald Bay Phase 2 Replat. This is a request to approve by Final Mylar. This plat application is requesting replat plots in Emerald Bay Phase 2 on 4.54 acres in a future land use of coastal center. This development went to Board of Adjustments to get setbacks amended, and they're now coming back to revise the setbacks to match the Board of Adjustment final order that appear on the previously approved plat. We're not creating any new lots, we're just, this is the final step in affecting the Board of Adjustments variance application to setbacks.
Any other questions? Any questions from the, any questions from the audience? Mr. Carpenter? Yes, sir. We're not the Busher.
My name is Jim Starhards. I'm a resident of Emerald Bay. I guess I just wanted to complain about a procedure item. I was not aware of this meeting today, because this is the notice that was posted for the homeowners of Emerald Bay who wish to attend this meeting. In case you can't see this, it is.
Can we keep that copy, sir?
Sure.
Okay.
In case you can't see that, that's nailed to a tree in the woods. In speaking to Mr. Carpenter earlier, I was told that that's all the developer's required to do, is post a notice. Well, if I'm a homeowner, and I don't live within 300 feet of that development, which I'm close, I would have no way of knowing that. Is it me, or should this be tightened up to where the homeowners would at least have a chance to know when the meetings are taking place? I think it's obvious the developer isn't interested in making sure we know what's going on. So that's my one complaint. The second one is, is my understanding that if you live within 300 feet, the developer's required to send you a notice, but he's not required to make sure you get the notice. So if he sends it out and says, I sent them out, there's no way to make sure that you are getting your notice. Is that a, the right way to run the railroad here? Shouldn't there be some way to ensure that the people that are going to be impacted by this at least are notified?
Do you have to sign for you? Do we do mail, mail pieces to the people within 300 feet, and do we do any newspaper advertising for this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Explain what we do do.
Yes, ma'am. For this particular development, they're required to post a notice. It's supposed to be posted on the property, visible from the nearest roadway. This is a subdivision that's not yet fully developed. It was posted near the entrance of this particular parcel. All we're doing is changing setbacks on a previously approved development. This actually was advertised probably for three weeks in the Dufneak Herald, where we post all of our public notices. That includes the parcel IDs, general driving directions, to give you an idea in what part of the county the development is located in. We believe notice was proper. In the context of mail notices, the Land Development Code does not require that the notices be actually received. It requires the developer prove that he actually mailed the notices with the U.S. Postal Service.
How does he prove that?
Certified mail.
Certified mail.
Certified mail.
They bring us the receipts where they, that are stamped by the post office.
I want to hear you.
And that's how we ensure that good faith effort is made to notify folks. They're required to use the property appraisers' address list of record at the time that that list is pulled. And those notices have to be mailed within a certain timeframe. The sign has to be posted within a certain timeframe. We get affidavits of the mailing notarized from the applicant, and an affidavit of, affidavit of signposting notarized from the applicant that shows when they posted the sign. Typically, signs are not posted on trees. We have a general sign format that's included in the application form itself to give folks an idea as to what the sign needs to say, the general shape of it, the general size of it, the size of the lettering, so that it is visible. And we have uniformity with these particular signs. They're typically posted on posts. There's no code requirement that they absolutely have to be posted on a particular type of post. They just have to be visible.
Is that something maybe Matrix, Matrix can look into, is that maybe they'll be posted on posts and not on?
Yes, I asked, when I asked you about no trespassing signs, there was a height requirement, so is that something that maybe?
I'm sorry, what, what signs?
I thought, when I asked you about no trespassing signs on property?
Oh.
Remember, the statute had a height requirement. It had to be so far.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe that's something we need to just respectfully.
We can certainly, we can certainly consider a specific sign format going forward, if that would be acceptable to the Board.
And I'm sorry, whichever Commissioner has the photograph, if you would give it to him. Thank you.
What are you doing, ma'am?
Thank you.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick comments. I don't live in Dufneak, so posting it in the newspaper there doesn't do me a bit of good.
Yes, sir.
I don't get it.
Sir, sir, could you speak to us?
Okay.
Talk to us.
Talk to us, and then I'll ask you.
Okay. I would like to know how many notices were mailed? I would like to know how many notices were mailed on this meeting, on this notice, and how many were received? Also, I'm not, I'm not complaining about any particular thing, I just think there's some laxity.
Right, we're constantly looking for ways to improve, and so we appreciate you coming up with your concerns, and we will, we will look for ways to improve our, our process.
Last thing I would say is, Emerald Bay is about 250 homeowners. It's not a little property. So, I think if most people were able to stand here in front of you, they would consider, they would say the same things I did. We just want to know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carpenter, would you answer about how many were mailed? Do you know that?
In this particular development, our mail notices were required when this development originally came through the process for a development order. That occurred, I don't know exactly how many of those are because that's not part of what we're here for today. There are no actual mail notices for plats because that mailing of notice occurs at the development order stage where the decision about what that plat's going to contain is made by this board. The last step is merely final approval of the plat. Plat has to meet Chapter 167 of Florida statutes, and it has to meet the terms of the development order that's been previously approved. And in this case, that development order was a final order from the Board of Adjustments, changing the setbacks. Didn't change any number of lots, didn't create any new subdivision. It merely adjusted the setbacks that had previously been approved. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item number three is the 4 Million Gallon reclaimed storage tank, small-scale amendment. This is a request to approve by ordinance. This small-scale amendment is submitted by Florida Community Services Corporation, DVA Region of Utilities. We're changing the future land use from conservation to public facilities on 4.25 acres directly across the street here just north of the existing storage tanks. We have an approved development order that's pending and is subject to this board's approval, the small-scale amendment, to authorize us to finalize that development order. And this is a public hearing, and this is final approval by ordinance. For small-scale amendments, we only have to have one reading of that particular ordinance, so this is an adoption hearing, if it be your pleasure.
Made a motion.
Second. Public hearing?
Oh, no, no ma'am. Is that required for?
Okay, before we, before we make a motion, any public comments on this agenda? Seeing none, I want to make a question. Would you make a motion?
Second.
Motion second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, that's all we have.
Could I say something before we leave? And I should have done it right here. On the Mike Barker property in Tennis, and, and understand me, he's never complaining about any staff whatsoever. But the process this man went through to get this simple thing done, from he'd be at the North Office, and so he'd have to come down here, and then down here, and he'd have to go back in here, and, and the stuff that he went through. I hope when we move to Freeport, all this can be simplified. Because there are a lot of people that would just give up, you know. I'm saying, he didn't say, he didn't, you know, bash any of our voids. He just, the process that he went through is just absolutely wrong.
And some of our processes that we go through as an individual without experience in that are pretty arduous. They certainly are.
So, there are, there, is there, can we look forward to streamlining it for certain? When, when someone looks at what Mr. Barker went through and says, okay, this is, this is one of the, just like you said, one of the old subdivisions, lots were very small. There were many things he went through that would have been at the large, minor development order stage, but much bigger. So, is there anyone?
We can certainly look at, streamline.
He went through a lot of trouble. He worked with me too, so, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.